Here.
Mayor Millman.
Here.
Councilmember Bess Campbell.
President.
Councilmember Arnt.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Can we stand for this place, Luke, please?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I move to accept the agenda and ordering content.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Any discussion? Councilmember Bess Campbell.
Um, I'd like to see if we can move, um, if we can move Agenda Item Five, Approval of the CCLIC fixed software to a business item. I just wanted to have a little quick update on that.
Okay, um, Business Item Number Five, let's move that to Business Item Number Ten.
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. I have a motion of second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, no special presentations, uh, public comments. We don't have anybody signed up virtually. Do we have anybody signed up here? Okay. We'll go on to the consent calendar.
I move to cons- accept the consent calendar as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Let's go to the first business item. Uh, first business item, Number Six. Interviews and appointment position number one hundred on planning commission. Uh, Mr. Buchanan, do you have anything to say? Are we gonna?
Mr. Mayor, I think we moved Item Number Five down to Number Six. No, no, we moved it to Ten, I'm sorry. And I don't have anything to add here. You have your packets, uh, you should have your packets before you, uh, we had the one applicant. He's here this evening, and I'm sure would love to come up and be interviewed or otherwise interrogated by council.
Um, we only have one applicant. Do I have a motion?
Um, I move to accept the candidate. Uh, this would be an extension of his office.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Any discussion? Councilmember Bess Campbell.
Well, if we would have interviewed, I'm sure we would have asked the question, why? Uh, but we know why this is gonna be, I believe, the third full term, uh, that Chair Stadler is gonna be, uh, on the commission, and he's done great work until now. So I have no reason to believe that, uh, he's gonna change that anytime soon, and, uh, I know I, for one, appreciate all the hard work that you do and the company and how much you keep, uh, Robert on his toes. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like, yeah, I'd like to piggyback on that and echo that. Uh, Chair Stadler, Commissioner Stadler's done a great job in serving our community, and I know that he'll continue doing that great service for us. I appreciate it. Would you like to say a few words? You're good. Okay. Um, Business Item Number Seven.
Point of order we need to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. We gotta, we gotta vote. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Unanimous. Congratulations. Thank you. Business Item Number Seven, Potential Site Identification for North Shore Parks and Recreation Service Area Community Center. Mr. Buchanan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I've got a presentation for you this evening largely mirrors your staff report, but for the benefit of everyone, including the audience at home, we'll go through this, uh, quickly, and then I, uh, have suggested a executive session to discuss some of the finer points of this agenda item, and so if council's willing, we can certainly do that after our presentation. Uh, this item is the potential site identification for North Shore Parks and Recreation Community Center. Uh, this has followed a conversation, uh, from the late May meeting about the CIP list and the desire to add an agenda id- or an item on that CIP list for potentially identifying a site that could be offered to NPRSA to host their, uh, community center that they're in the works of it, of going through, very early phase, uh, but going through that process at the moment. So just some background, uh, so we're all working from the same position on this. North Shore Parks and Recreation Service Area, commonly referred to as NPRSA, special taxing district established in nineteen eighty-eight. Uh, it was amended in two thousand and one, about a decade later, and that's when Woodinville joined the, uh, the group. It mirrors the boundaries of the North Shore School District. Members today include Bothell, Kenmore, Woodinville, King, and Snohomish Counties. There's unincorporated portions of both King and Snohomish Counties included in that district. Uh, it was originally formed to build and own the North Shore Senior Center that is in Bothell. Um, it has done so for, since, uh, its incorporation. Uh, today it still owns that, and somewhat recently, I'm gonna lose track, but several years ago passed a levy, uh, to largely rehabilitate the senior center, which had fallen in disrepair. Uh, they are working through that process right now, uh, largely in, with assistance from staff, uh, from the city of Bothell, who is helping, uh, provide some of that kind of, uh, on-the-ground expertise as far as bidding and construction management. Their next endeavor that they've, uh, that that board, of course, which we have a member of and represent, each entity has a, a member that represents that, their member jurisdictions, um, their next, uh, effort, and this comes back several years ago when it first came to council, when they started kind of that scoping process, is, uh, a, a youth or community center, and so they've started undertaking an evaluation of, and, uh, an exploration of what that could be, uh, serving the NPRSA district, I think, uh, is largely recognized that, that these services are, uh, lacking in this district, and I think from that springs this interest in, in, uh, potentially exploring and eventually building potentially a community center to serve the district. So this is pulled directly from their website. Uh, this, and I provided that website late last week to council for their hopeful exploration, but this is just a copy and paste of kind of a real quick synopsis of what it is that they're working to do. Uh, right now, they're in the, uh, study phase. We'll come back to this in just a second, but looking at the community needs, uh, survey, what does the community need every, and I know there's been conversation over the years that I've worked for, for Woodinville, everything from a pool to a youth center to more sports to all kinds of things, and, you know, really, what could this facility be, um, and what would best serve the needs of the, the growing district? This is their timeline. You can see they're a little bit behind, I think, already at this point, but that's perfectly natural in these, the course of, uh, these, these types of events. Um, they are, right now, I think, wrapping up this, the needs assessment. Uh, we'll have those results later this year for us, um, and I think imminently kicking off the site identification process, and unless I am misspeaking, uh, I'm looking at our representative to the, to the board, uh, they have funding through King County to do the initial needs assessment, but I don't believe have funding for the site identification process.
Councilmember Arnt.
Thank you. Uh, they were given three hundred thousand dollars from King County for the, for this process of community outreach and, uh, potentially citing and design, but, uh, they do not have a funding mechanism identified for building a site. It would likely be, uh, at a levy ask to the voters.
Thank you. Okay, so the opportunity, and I think this is what council was lightly touching on in its May meeting, is as the NPRSA is working in, and start, starting work on the site identification process, um, and recognizing that there's a growing demand in the district, and more specifically, I know all of you have heard, uh, through your years of service, that there is a growing demand for such services in Woodinville. That's been documented in some of our actual studies, our citizen surveys, our pro-plan, your strategic plan that this council adopted, the, the desire for more, uh, robust parks and rec programming in our community. So taking those two pieces together, I think council was touching on, and I, and I agree, I think there's an opportunity here to potentially put forward a Woodinville site, uh, as a potential home for this, uh, future project, um, and, and this would follow closely our model, uh, that has made the city successful over the years, where we are a contract entity, we don't get into every line of business ourselves, but we work with people who can do that and serve our community, uh, probably more efficiently than the city can. Um, and just, uh, by way of background, I don't know all of you know, but it was twenty thirteen, twenty thirteen, that, uh, city got out of the parks and rec line of business?
Uh, twenty oh- ten.
Twenty eleven.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, so we, we had previously been in that business. We had moved out of that business in, in twenty-ten. So based on that, council directed staff, and this was the conversation at that late May meeting, uh, to begin work identifying a site and add a potential site, uh, purchase to the upcoming CIP conversations. Uh, I think one piece that council, uh, I would love to get some guidance from council on whether that's now or, uh, in executive session discussion, um, I think actually now probably makes more sense, is the timing of this. This obviously came up in the context of a CIP conversation for twenty twenty-five, um, but knowing that the site identification process is likely to start sooner, i- is that something that we still put in a, that we're anticipating in twenty twenty-five, or is this something that we need to be taking more, uh, or taking action on sooner? So that's, I think, one question for a conversation this evening.
Can we go back to the slide, um, that shows the NPRSA timeline?
That's this one.
So it sounds like they're behind on this timeline, they're adjusting it, or are they gonna hold to the fast deadline for site analysis? Looks like it ends in September.
My understanding, and correct me again if I'm wrong, I, I think they are slightly behind schedule on this already, where they are, have not officially started the site identification process, but are hoping to do so imminently.
Okay. And, uh, and I have a question, uh, for Alana. Uh, you don't have to get it right now, but, um, later, if you can identify relevant, uh, needs assessment with the parks and recreation and that type of thing, that would be, I think that would be relevant to our conversation, but if you could pull that up eventually, it doesn't have, it can even be after executive session, so I appreciate that. Thank you. Councilmember Taylor.
Yeah, I, I'm reading this, and I'm, I'm rather confused about this timeframe, and is the idea here that we're budgeting for property? Or are we buying property before we even know what we're buying property for? I think, we don't know what we're sizing for. It could be a football field, it could be baseball, it could be, uh, anything, so how do we know we're looking at the right property?
The timing is, is part of the question that I posed here, right, is initially, this, this came up in the context, again, of the CIP conversation, which would obviously start twenty twenty-five and beyond, um, but with their citing process starting earlier, the question becomes, do, are we interested in potentially joining that conversation earlier? I think you raise a, a fair point, and I, I tried to address that somewhat in, in your staff reports of, we don't know what this is gonna be, right? We know it could be anything from a large facility to a small facility. Uh, we had, and we'll get through it here in the next couple slides, when we, uh, ran some initial, identified some initial screening criteria, I think we spoke to at least two acres, which I think is still probably too small for a lot of these facilities, and if we're looking at some of these other facilities, again, not knowing what this is gonna be, looking at some comparable cities as kind of the extreme in other jurisdictions, I think likely that a three to really probably four-plus acre side is really what we need to be looking at, which gives us flexibility to accommodate, uh, either, uh, any manner of combination, right? So you have a large community center, they end up with a small community center, and we have property left over to do something else with. There's, I think, gives us a lot of flexibility to do something eventually.
Okay, and I still have the, the floor. Uh, follow-on question to that is, what would happen if we wait for this citing process to happen? Because this is really putting us on the line. We'll have property, and they choose something over in Kenmore, or they choose in another location. Now we're stuck with property. It's kind of a waste. It, so how do we deal with that?
One of the criteria that I'll, I'll go through here in a moment is, and because we, we identify that concern, right, there is a risk to it, but one of the criteria we identified is any property should be viable for other potential public uses. So one thing, so that could be, and depending on where we cite that, that could be anything from additional recreation that the city takes on, right? Put another park on it, to parking as an issue, to affordable housing, to all these other needs that the city has talked about over the years of, we need property for these public purposes, identifying a site that could serve, viably serve one or more of those additional public purposes.
Oh, yeah, I'm not sure that that's been discussed and vetted, so, uh, buying property without a need is something. I, I understand putting a budget in the CIP and developing a plan, but, uh, buying it and then figuring out what to do with it is really backwards, so.
Councilmember Arnt.
So, um, just to flesh out some of the discussion that was had at our last NPRSA meeting, uh, a lot of these questions about the site selection were discussed at the time we had a presentation by the consultants doing this work, and they are looking for site selection focusing on publicly owned land within the boundary, and they are gathering all possible ideas, all possible properties, and then starting the elimination process, and when they discussed it with the board, they were very clear to say that they could, they could do a lot of different things with small properties. Um, they showed examples of other community centers or rec centers that they had built in different parts of the country that went vertical on very small parcels, uh, that were integrated into existing park properties as just off to the side. Um, so they had ways of dealing with very different properties, depending on what was available, but they identified citing as the single largest hurdle to go and, and actually make this work, because there's definitely a need in the community. We, they already have the initial demographic data to show that, and, um, the, and the survey that they're putting out right now will focus on what the specifics of that need and the specifics of the desires of our residents, but finding a place to actually put it is the biggest hurdle. They are planning to look at all these sites, starting, uh, their original timeline was starting now, um, through the next couple of months, and then they were hoping to come back to the public, having narrowed down to three sites in September, and asking for public feedback that soon. So it is very much, if this is something that we as a city are interested in pursuing, there is a time crunch to it. Um, it does step outside of our typical CIP and budgeting timeline, but it, it is something that if we as a city are interested in putting forth a property, then we need to do so in the next few weeks, months, or we will have missed that window of opportunity. So once they come forward with the three selections in September, uh, it will, the site might limit what they're able to offer, so if they had a very small parcel where everything had to go vertical, they'd be less likely to offer a large aquatic center, for example, but they could offer other community amenities. So it might determine what they could offer to the community, and then they would look for additional community feedback in that September window with a second round of surveys to see which, uh, voters prefer, which meets the needs, and which location they could then start planning for the, the, uh, the build-out and actually putting costs to it to then go out for a levy purpose.
Councilmember Evans.
So I would say that the city actually has made strategic investments in the past in property that we didn't know a hundred percent what we would do with. Wood Trails is an example. We bought that property, and it wasn't until very recently that we turned it into a park and started the design phase. We purchased the railroad tracks, and we're just now starting to do the design. So I would say that the history, the, the city does have a history of making strategic investments that make sense and really bring value to the residents of Woodinville. Um, having said that, I think that we should definitely make sure that we can have our hat in the ring if it's feasible for us, because bringing, uh, bringing a center here that's funded by the North Shore School District area will bring so much value, not just to Woodinville, but all those around us, but definitely to Woodinville that we could never offer as a city, because we wouldn't have the funds to be able to develop something like this. So I think it would be a real waste, and I would just like to say that whatever property we look at, if we end up not getting chosen, it would be great for us to think about other potential uses, like turn it into a park, or, you know, parking, or whatever. So, um, let's just keep that in mind as we go, that this, we could think about this as a strategic investment in Woodinville's future.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yeah, I agree that we should consider this as a, at least something we consider going forward. When looking at the map there, we're right in the middle of that jurisdiction there. We'll be a prime contender, uh, if they do decide to move forward this process, and as mentioned before, I think staff has done a great job at putting in safeguards for properties that we're considering, where if, for the chance we aren't selected, there's so many uses that we can use to benefit the community because of the property's location and size and all the things that have been identified here, that will still meet the long-term strategic need of this city to serve our residents. So I think, uh, what we, the work you put in here to identify locations and the possibility of being chosen for a great amenity for our community is a opportunity we cannot pass up.
Councilmember Bess Campbell.
So I have to be the downer and ask the, the questions that they're asking. Um, one, um, we don't have any money set aside for the next step. Right now, we just have the, we identified that we have this thing that we really wanna do, which everybody agrees we wanna do. It's that second funding source we don't have. So we're gonna rush to bring a site forward, whether we own it or we have to buy it, we don't know, for a project whose outcome, we don't know, because it hasn't been decided yet. We're rushing to buy land for this project, and we don't know what this is. We don't have the money for this. Um, land is not cheap, particularly in Woodinville, particularly in the downtown core. It is a very desirable place to be. Um, the other thing to consider is that the NPRSA is funded by a property tax levy, so that means this would have to go to the voters. So when I'm looking at the timeline, and I'm looking at where we are and where we should be, there's no way it's gonna get on the ballot for this November. Um, it would likely, because the NPRSA levy is only through twenty, I guess twenty twenty-five, um, or maybe twenty twenty-four, we would have to go out for a new levy. So it would be a levy at a time when the King County Parks Levy would also be coming through, so we would have a number of levies coming in front of people at the same time. When you look at, for example, Kirkland, there, ninety-three thousand people there are about equivalent to the ninety-three-some-odd-thousand people who live in the NPRSA area. To create their pool complex was a hundred million dollars. When you look at what that is per assessed value, it's two hundred and eighty dollars a year per million dollars assessed over a ten-year span. So we need to know what this plan is before we can go out, even to ask for a levy, but in order to ask for a levy, you have to have a plan, but we don't have a plan because we're behind on the scheduling, and believe me, I understand why they're behind. It took years for that money to get from the coffers of King County to the NPRSA to conduct this, but there is so much unknown. Time is, I think, the least of our friends right now. If we do something now and hold on to it, that's money that we've tied up in real estate, hoping that this is what it becomes, but then what is it going to be if it's not? I think we owe it to the public here to say, we have an idea of what we would like it to be, and we haven't had those discussions yet, to, so to say, in a hypothetical world, it could be this other great thing. Well, why don't we have a plan for that, too? So if this falls through, we have an immediate fallback, but right now, there's so many questions I have about funding, I guess is the biggest one. We have to rely on voters to say yes. So if we buy this land and voters say no, we're in the same position that Kirkland is in. They're holding on to land that may or not be able to sell. Now, our land is desirable, I understand that, um, but I think I would like a little bit more information, um, before we can move forward with what a decision is. This feels very abrupt, and we have to have it now. We're being rushed, even though this process is taking longer. This seems sort of backwards to me, so, um, I want this project. I was on the NPRSA when we were talking about this, but there's a lot of questions that need to be answered, and the devil is in the details, and a project of this size, there's only one way to do it, and that's the right way.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yeah, I just wanna correct one misstatement, uh, earlier. Councilmember said that, uh, we just purchased Wood Trails. That was a settlement from many years ago. It wasn't just purchased, it was turned to a park. That was the dedication when we settled. It just took that much time to get to a settlement for Wood Trails. The other is, if we have money, let's finish Wood Trails. Let's complete what we know, and we promised that we would finish when we had, uh, money on, on the table, so why are we buying more property, more recreation facilities, when we haven't finished what we've already started? So, thank you.
So I, I guess the, the fear and uncertainty being spread is, is that if we, you know, this is their timeline. It's not, we don't control this timeline. If we're going to, uh, address a community need, this came out in numerous surveys, uh, we have a growing city, uh, we have a growing, and a younger and younger every year population that has a very definite, uh, community need, um, this is their timeline, uh, and by experience, delay kills deals, and so, as mentioned, we're right in the middle of the service area. Um, we, we would be, we should be able to identify and put together a very competitive, uh, parcel for this project, in my opinion. And not only will it serve the community very well, which has been obvious, uh, we, we did, I think it was two thousand and eleven, we did away with, city did away with their, um, Parks and Rec Department. We, this, this is something that, if we were able to achieve this, this puts off the discussion of a Parks and Recs Department probably for a decade, which a Par- a Parks and Rec Department is probably coming based on our growth. I, I can see that need coming. Um, that would probably be, uh, some type of levy process. Um, and in this instance, we get, uh, the service area to help us pay for something that'll be to serve Woodinville residents very well. We have bought property around the city. Um, Wood Trails property is one of them. Um, we've bought various properties that have been identified in your packet. Uh, none of them look suitable to me. They're all steep slope and ravines and, and whatever. This, we should identify a property that would be suitable and put us, make us very competitive, um, for this process. Um, we have the money. We have, how much in reserves do we have? Sixty-four million?
Uh, well, that wouldn't be our reserves, but in the general fund at the end of twenty twenty-three, we were a little north of thirty million.
Okay, so we have thirty million in reserves, and typically, right now, earning one and a half, two percent. This is, this is, uh, something that if, if for some reason, worst-case scenario, it doesn't work out, um, we could, uh, do our own recreation facility. We could, parking was mentioned, a dog park was mentioned, or has been talked about, affordable housing was mentioned. Uh, one thing that wasn't mentioned is that we're growing out of public works, uh, public works. We could, we could identify property for public works that would, uh, fit our growing city. So we have lots, lots of, uh, lots of needs, and we have lots of, uh, alternatives if, if for some reason it work out, but I, I think that we would put ourselves in a very, very strong position, and having, uh, the voters from Kenmore, Bothell County, and Woodinville help pay for a rec center that's serving our community and our neighbors, I think is, is, is a great idea, so I support this. Councilmember Bess Campbell.
One thing to consider is the mechanism for paying for this. So the land would be donated to the NPRSA. We would buy the land, and we would give it over. We haven't talked about, is there a special consideration that the Woodinville portion of the levy would be proportionally decreased by the land donation that we have? This isn't something that we've discussed with the NPRSA, um, but I wouldn't expect us to pay three times over to use this. I don't think we should pay for the land, pay the levy, and then pay any membership fee, uh, to belong to whatever this facility becomes, so there would need to be a great understanding over what we would get by putting forward this land. Do we get something in return? Do we get a decrease in levy amount, or are we donating this and paying more than another city for the privilege of having it here? I think it's important to understand what we're paying for, and if it gets us more consideration in terms of property tax releases. Um, the cost of, uh, membership at the YMCA pools, just for a ballpark, is eighteen hundred dollars a year for a family, so you're paying to build it, you're paying for the land, and then you're paying to use it. Now, not everybody is gonna be able to pay to use the facility, but I think we should only pay our fair share. I don't think we should pay the lion's share, so whatever we pay in here, there needs to be consideration for putting so, putting forth, really probably some of the most expensive land in that service area, getting something back for Woodinville that is more than just having it cited here. Yes, that's wonderful, but money talks here, and putting forth that type of money on land in a very prime part of King County should come with more than a thanks and a pat on the shoulder.
I've got a more presentation, too, so.
Okay, uh, one more. Uh, Councilmember Edwards.
Yeah, I have a question. Uh, in terms of the, what's been proposed so far, in terms of property that they're looking for, would it be a donation, or could it be a long-term lease at a very discounted rate? Is there been any discussion about what that is?
No, and I think we are way early in the conversation to had, to commit to any of that right now, right? This is, the question before council is, are we gonna throw our hat in the ring for this site or not? We don't have to, right? We absolutely do not have to identify a site and offer a site to this process. It will continue without us, though, so that's the discussion that council has to make a decision on right now. All right, with that, um, this is in your council packet. I won't go through all this verbatim, but these are the recommended site screening criteria, um, again, included in your packet.
again, included in your packet. Just kind of summarizing these, looking for a minimum of two acres. Again, I mentioned earlier, ideally larger than that, because larger gives us more flexibility for alternative uses if this community center didn't happen, or additional uses if it did happen in some iteration. It should avoid wetland areas, streams, avoid steep slopes and topography. Ideally, we're not re, or eliminated an existing well-used park for this facility. Probably not fit in residential areas if there's going to be a lot of activity to and from the facility. It should complement the surrounding area and uses. All this, we'll see here in a moment how this kind of culminates. The placement should ideally align with other priorities and efforts of the city. The site, and this, I think, is a very important one, as we're just a member of the district, that the site should offer convenient and easy access, multimodal access to not just Woodinville residents, but all NPRSA residents. And this, I think, is one that council is obviously circling around quite a bit. The city can only acquire property for public purposes. With that in mind, we should have viable alternative public uses if that community center did not happen or happened in a lesser extent. So, with that, this map is in your packet. Outlined in purple are all of the city-owned parcels that are greater than two acres in size. Also overlaid on this map, as you can see, are the steep slope map and the critical area wetland map. As you can see from this, pretty much everything we own is wet or on the side of a cliff. So, and, and this was, I mean, this was part of the acquisition process. Actually, after I came on, the council bought a variety of pieces of property for conservation's sake that were wetlands or steep slopes. And I did end up, actually, to address the conversation earlier, actually, since I came on, I did acquire several of the, at the direction of council, obviously, several of the Wood Trails properties to complete that property.
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Yeah, after I came on in 2016, I think it was one of the first things I did, was receiving direction from council to finish acquiring various properties up in that Wood Trails area. So, we didn't own all of that prior to 2016. And I, I'd have to go look and see which of those two or three parcels that I worked to acquire, but there was at least two or three of them. As you can see from this map, and it's in your packet, there are only several parcels that are of at least two acres in size that are not the side of a cliff or underwater. And those are City Hall, our sports fields, as long as it's not raining too hard, and Wood Trail, or Wooden Creek Park, really. And the rest of it, you can see there, and we can go through these. I trust that council can orient themselves to these different parcels. We've got everything from Wood Trails, Greenbrier Park, there is another large one, the West Ridge property that we own, it's on the side of the mountain. So, that's anything over two acres. The conclusion with that map, I don't think it took very long to reach, was that there are no viable city-owned sites based on those criteria. Again, those criteria are suggested, we can change those, but I think they're reasonable Turning to, if the conclusion is that the city doesn't own any current viable sites, but is interested in putting forward a site, obviously, then we'd be looking at some sort of acquisition process. Based on those criteria, this is the area that we think that works well for identifying a site. This is, of course, our currently zoned GB area, which has been the focus of a rezon as part of the comp plan process. But the reasons we think, and again, this is alignment with those recommended criteria, is there is good opportunity for site assemblage. There's a number of either two-acre or larger sites already, or a number of smaller sites that could be compiled and assembled into larger than the two acres, and probably even larger than that. There is relatively easy access to NPRSA constituents, and this, of course, comes from the exit from 522. Certainly, the conversation about the traffic through the 522 interchange is a conversation, but compared to other areas in our city, this has relatively easy access to, the rest of the service area via 522. I think this next one is a very important one. It has a very complementary future land use. If council sees it through on the trail network that we were working so hard and diligently to build on the East Rail Corridor, I think a community center, recreation center, is a perfect complementary use to an adjacent trail system that we're going to invest quite heavily in if we continue on that path. Likely compatible uses with a potential GB rezon, I know that's still kind of up in the air, but, and subject to discussion, but likely, as we see redevelopment in that area, a walkable and accessible community center certainly makes a lot of sense. There are, as you can see from this map, minimal, minimal critical areas in this GB district, not a lot of steep slopes, a little bit of wetland here and there. Of course, we do have a proximity to the creek that we'll have to account for as well on any site assemblage effort. And because of a lot of those factors, namely access, redevelopment in the adjacent area, and proximity to the trail, which I think is maybe the most intriguing one of those on that criteria list, there are numerous other easily identifiable, viable public uses for property, should the community center not materialize in the future. Some of them I mentioned already easily come to mind, parking for that trail network, additional amenity space for that trail network, as we continue to look at what could that trail network include as far as sports courts and fields and et cetera. Let your mind run wild on that. So, with that, of course, we can discuss any questions, try to answer any questions council may have, of course, recognizing that this is very early on in this sighting process, right? That there is going to be some questions that we, nor anybody at this point, has answers to. I did recommend, and I hope the mayor has the recommended language for that, to convene to executive session to discuss some more specifics on this, and then following those, provide direction to staff. And I don't, based, because we'll need to have this conversation, and hopefully that conversation, I don't have a recommended motion for you at the moment, but we'll work on crafting that by the time we're done with this conversation this evening.
Councilmember Best Campbell.
So, if the NPRSA is going to look at sites in September, it seems to me we can't put it on the 15, or 25, 26 CIP, because that's after the fact. So, I think that's off the table. So, what you're asking us really is, do we go in tonight and say we're going to buy a piece of land?
I think there are several, one option, I don't know if it's good or not, but I'm going to throw it out there, is we could work to secure an option for a property, right? There's additional cost to doing that, but we're not fully, fully buying the property. We're paying money for an option, that if we decide to exercise that some point in the negotiated future, that we do end up spending all the money to buy the property. That could be kind of an intermediate step, if you will. Hopefully, I'm making sense on this, but.
Well, that was the question I was going to ask, is it would involve the city purchasing the land, and I don't know if NPRSA is still meeting every other month or every month, but for this, if we put forth a property, could we also have language that says, and we expect an equivalent amount of property tax to be levied on people from the city of Woodinville, to be decreased by the amount of money that we would potentially spend on this land? So, I would use it as a, if you'd like the land, then also, this is what Woodinville is going to ask, because we've provided the land in a really great location, this is going to be an additional benefit for Woodinville. If this is going to move as quickly as it sounds like it is, I would like to at least have something identified that we're getting for it other than just the bill. So, is that something that you would feel comfortable using as a negotiating tactic, I guess?
I can attach whatever strings, obviously, council directs me to attach to this conversation. Like any negotiation, it comes with pluses and minuses in doing that, right? And that's something council's got to make a determination on.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
I definitely hear the idea of trying to get something extra for this, but the thing that I'd like to point out is that if it does get located here, what we would get is actual activities for our constituents who have been asking for parks and recreations that we feel are a good bit to afford. And we would have to spend that money time over time versus purchasing land, which is a one-time event. And I'd like to point that out to make sure that we realize what we'd actually be getting would be a much better, long-term investment without the cost of staff and without the cost of having to build the building as a city. So, this is a move where we are once again working with neighboring cities and other regional partners to make the best impact, given our small size.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yeah, and I don't think we can quantify the value of having it in our community in terms of connections with the other stuff we're working on, creating a walkable city with amenities for our community, having it located here, it provides that to our community. If it's located in, somewhere in Bothell or Kenmore, it's not going to have the impact that our community is looking for in terms of having it right here in our backyard for our community members. So, that, I know you can't put a monetary value on that, but that's, that's worth it totally, in my opinion, to have it right here for our community to use and be part of.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
And just once again, to consider the stack on this, if you are a parent and you're driving into Woodinville to drop off your kids to an event at a community center, my guess is you'll stop in for a glass of wine somewhere, too.
I agree with Deputy Mayor. There is a, there is a extreme value by having this type of property within our five-and-a-half square miles of serving our community. That, that is an advantage. It, it, you know, other cities have a community center within their, within their city limits. We don't have a park and recs department. This, long run, is going to be a cost saver, because I can tell you, I am fairly sure that down the road, if we don't do something like this, a parks and recs department will be brought up again by this council or a future council, and that is likely going to be expensive. It's, it's going to require a build, it's going to require probably a levy of taxes on Woodinville citizens only. So, I, I support pursuing this, and I also support, I think, investment-wise, dollar-wise, I think if we identify the right property, I think we do a long-term lease like we do with the YMCA, a buck a year or something, and we maintain ownership of the property so that we have flexibility in the future to either expand, or add, or do something different to the property, that we would be able to own that. And right now, our investments aren't earning that much money, and I think that longer term, having property in downtown is going to pay off for the city dramatically. So, I favor looking for some appropriate property for. Councilmember Best Campbell, fourth, fourth time.
Yes, of course, this is a discussion. My question is, are we expecting, as our staff report says, that we are not going to be taking any action tonight? Is there an expectation that we could take action, from what you're hearing on the council, to purchase a property? And if so, I think we should say it publicly, so people know there's an opportunity that we could come and say that.
I think that's going to be, that needs to be part of the conversation from, in an executive session. I don't, obviously, we're not in a position to take final act, for the council to take a final action on property acquisition this evening, but I think direction to staff about next steps, I think, is what I need to hear this evening.
So, you don't expect that you're going to point out a property, and we will come out after executive session and take a vote to purchase it?
I don't, we're not in a position to purchase it this evening. Direction could be, whether it's a motion or not, I, we need to have this discussion, but direction could be to go out and identify and, and work on making offers on property, but ultimately, council's going to have to approve a purchase and sale agreement on property before we acquire anything. I, obviously, we're not in that position this evening.
And then how easy is it to buy property within two months?
Publicly, not easy, but we pull off minor miracles on the regular, so we'll do our best.
Any further discussion, questions? Seeing none, we'll adjourn to an executive session. Executive session, city council, council will adjourn to a closed session immediately following the NPRSA. Potential site identification discussion for approximately 20 minutes. To consider the acquisition of real estate when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price. RCW 42.30.110. No formal action expected to be taken.
Mr. Mayor, I might suggest we go ahead and just make it 30, because I think we're going to take at least 30.
Okay, let's, let's go till 8:15. Okay, we're back in session, no formal action taken. I did have a question about citizen survey before we move off this business item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll speak to that. Let me just share my screen. While, while you guys were in executive session, we, we combed through three different documents, one being the most recent citizen survey, the other being the 2020 pro plan, and then the third being the council adopted strategic plan. And pulled out a few items from each of those to kind of speak towards this. So, super high level, but in the strategic plan, I just wanted to note that Initiative Three, enhance parks and recreation offerings, objective item two, council, that a council adopted, is to offer high-quality recreation programming, and that it's readily accessible to all Woodinville residents. So, that's in this kind of gray box here, objective B. Also, during the public engagement portion of this plan development, there was a survey question that asked what quality of life issues matter most in Woodinville. Top was enhance existing parks and trails, add new parks and trails, other, and then the fourth was increase recreation program, programming. Moving on to the pro plan, there were four goals that were adopted by council. First, to ensure adequate and enriching recreational activities for the residents and visitors of Woodinville, to create effective and efficient methods of acquiring, developing, operating, and maintaining facilities and programs that are safe, maintainable, and that account for long-term cost and benefits. The next being to support and encourage public, private, and nonprofit development of high-quality, diversified cultural arts and historical features that meet community and market demand. And lastly, to actively collaborate with King and Snohomish Counties, North Shore School District, and other public and private agencies to deliver exceptional recreational opportunities without redundancy and at a lower cost. And then in the citizen survey, and this, this bit was included in the staff report, but one of the questions was to rate different parks and recreation features. City Parks was ranked at either good or excellent by 78% of the respondents, whereas recreation programs or classes and recreation centers and facilities was at, was about 20% lower than people's opinions of parks, where it was about 56% and 57% respectively. One other item from the pro plan that, that I did not add to this document marked, here, I can pull it up. I'll just, I'll just speak to it. Hope I don't have it open anymore. Oh, yes, I do. So, there was a question about ranking high, medium, and low priorities across the different years that we did outreach for the pro plan, 2019, excuse me, 20, because I'm looking at it backwards, 1998, 2000, 2004, 2012, and 2019. And in programming, after-school programs was ranked high, recreational sports leagues was ranked high, special events, teen programs, and youth sports leagues were all ranked high, so those kind of tie into this as well.
Thank you, and I, I was hoping, and that was exactly what I'd hoped for, that that really dovetails into our conversation about, uh, community center and what the community is wanting. Um, I'd also like to add that, um, it emphasizes working with other, other entities outside of, uh, Woodenville. Um, also, uh, the NPRSA stated goals to improve athletics, academics, and arts. So that all coordinates with a lot of these categories. So, uh, I'm, I'm a big proponent. I think this would be an excellent addition if we could, uh, bring this to Woodenville for our citizens. Any questions?
Seeing none. Uh, thank you for the information. Uh, business item number eight, discussion of city's community engagement summer activities. Mr. O'Neil again, or is that Alana?
Uh, this will be Ms. Winston.
That would be Ms. Winston tonight.
Ms. Winston.
All right. Good evening, council. I am going to show you a little bit of a sneak peek into what we have planned this summer for engagement. Um, summer is knocking on our door. It is here, so we need to take advantage of the good weather and the opportunities that our friends over at the chamber are providing us with the summer concert series. And, um, you know, it, diving into all the ways that we can, um, touch base with our community, our neighbors, and so that they get to know what, what we're up to, what we're doing, and, um, hear what they have to say as well. Taking a look at what we've done just this past year, we've got, um, just, just a short list of, of things that we've done. We've done CPR and AED classes, uh, first aid classes in partnership with, um, the Medic One Foundation here at City Hall throughout the last few months. I think we've had over 100 people from the public attend, um, and city staff has, has been certified in, in those classes as well. We've had several field trips to City Hall, uh, first grade field trips, which are my personal favorite. They are a lot of fun. We've had over 125-ish students, um, this year alone. Uh, we did a comprehensive plan and transportation plan open house in October. Uh, we've attended STEM fairs at some of the elementary schools. We did a citizen survey. We hosted our first Arbor Ed Arbor Day celebration here at City Hall. Um, we participated in the Celebrate Woodenville Winter Fest and Summer Concerts and a few more. And here are just some additional photos from some of those events. For the summer schedule, we will be attending all of the Celebrate Woodenville Summer Concerts. We have different, uh, items on display or planned right now. It, it is subject to change depending on how things are going with the deliverables and if we're able to get things done in time, but I have faith. Uh, we do have different things, uh, on display for all of the concerts. Um, on July 10th, we will be presenting, um, some images and concepts for the Trestle Widening and 133rd of Roundabout. Um, on the 17th, we will have a preview to our surprise July's 20th open house. Um, July 24th, we will have, um, items for our boat launch and stage. The 31st, we will have the Capital Improvement Plan, CIP, a public comment period announcement. And then August 10th, we will be participating in the parade, and I'm still working on what we're going to do for the festival, but I have, I have an idea, and I think it's going to be fun. Um, as I just said, we are going to have an open house, a, a summer open house on July 20th, right next door at the Carol Edwards Center. We will be in the Madrona Room from, uh, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM on a Saturday, um, right when we are, or right when our friends at the farmer's market are going to be there. So hopefully, we'll have some people pop in. Hopefully, we will have some people who get the announcements, um, that are being delivered via mail, um, postcard in the next couple of weeks stop by, um, and just really hoping that us being there on the weekend will, will bring in some people that we wouldn't see during the week. More opportunities that we can look into over the summer and into fall are pop-ups in the park, a Q and A, where staff members can pitch a, a little canopy and pass out cookies or popsicles and just, um, chat with anyone, anyone who's passing by. Uh, we can host more community forums here, um, and roundtable discussions for those more intimate conversations, maybe with smaller businesses or, uh, community-based organizations. Uh, other things that we can look into that would be a little more city council-focused would be Coffee with the Council. I'd love to kickstart that with you all, if you have bandwidth to do so this summer. Um, we can also do virtual office hours, uh, in town halls as well, if you're interested. I think with what we have planned for the month of July, um, staff is at their max capacity of, of time that they can, um, spend doing some, some outreach. But, uh, August, September, and like I said, leading into fall and in the winter months, I'd be happy to connect with, uh, with council, uh, to do any of the items that are on this list and anything that you might want to explore. Um, and that's that. It was quick and easy. That's what we have planned for the summer. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Any questions for Alana? Mrs. Winston. Ms. Winston.
Thank you.
No questions. Thank you. Oh, Deputy Mayor Randolph.
No questions. Just thank you for, uh, profiling this and putting these events together. I know that the Community Engagement Subcommittee has been working diligently to try and get some of these things put together where we can do additional community engagement and make sure that everyone's engaged. So, uh, thank you for putting these in front of us before we have that full plan.
My pleasure.
Business item number nine, approval of resolution number 646, revising purchase policies, purchasing policies. Mr. Fritz, you're up.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. Um, I have for you this evening a presentation on purchasing policy update. Uh, most of this, some of this is driven by changes in state statute, which goes into effect on July 1. Um, but, uh, it's best practice to always, uh, review policies on a regular basis. Staff looks at, uh, the purchasing policies annually, and if we find anything that needs to be updated, we bring it to council. The last time we brought, um, purchasing policies to council was two years ago. Um, the, uh, as I stated, some state, um, statutes have changed and go into effect, um, next month. Uh, that required us to make changes in our policy. So some of the changes that we're going to be, um, reviewing this evening, uh, or proposed changes that we're reviewing this evening are mandated, while others are, um, at the council's discretion. So just to help everybody, including the general public, understand, when it comes to making purchases for, uh, a government entity, it's a complicated process. In fact, the city has employed an expert to specialize in helping us make sure that we're meeting all the rules and regulations when it comes to purchasing. Uh, her name's Chista Carecian. She's been with us for, I think, a little over, um, five years now, and she does a fabulous job for the city. Um, she, I mean, uh, in terms of the complexity, there's, uh, multiple types of purchases. So purchasing for a public work, which is defined by statute, um, has, um, more than the three methods that I've listed here, but there's the minimal competition method, the small works roster method, and competitive, competitively bid method. Um, if we're just going to go out and buy a supply material or equipment, um, there's, um, just getting quotes depending on the thresholds, and then competitively bidding. But if you're buying telecommunications and data processing equipment, you can also opt in to use the competitive negotiation method, which is nowhere the same as any of the public works, works methods. And then when you're buying, uh, you're going out for, um, services, services can be a public work, but if they're not a public work, they have a different set of rules. So, this is all to say that, um, uh, purchasing for a government agency is complicated and requires a lot of, a, a lot of, uh, deep understanding. And so the changes that I'm going to outline go over specific areas of these different types of purchases. And it's a different set of rules, different thresholds for each, and so it can be a little convoluted. So let's talk about bid thresholds for public works, um, uh, purchasing. So on the left-hand side of the chart is what our current policies say. On the right-hand side of the chart is what we're proposing to council. And I would note that the $50,000 limit that we're proposing at the first threshold is a city-imposed limit. We could take it up to, uh, all, uh, depending on whether it's a single, uh, single craft or trade, or a multiple craft or trade. We could take it all the way up to the $75,500 or the $150,000. Um, uh, so by law, we don't have to seek quotes for anything that's a single craft trade if it's below $75,500, using this method to procure. Um, and we're, uh, staff is recommending a, a more conservative approach and setting that threshold at $50,000, um, stating in our, our rules that professional judgment should be used, and if it's warranted, we should still go ahead and get multiple quotes, um, uh, and then saying after $50,000, seeking quotes is, is required. Under the small works roster process, uh, we're recommending changing the thresholds to $75,500, um, going out to all contractors. And the reason we recommend that for the small works processor process is, um, if we were to use the $150,000 threshold, it actually is more administratively burdensome on the city than using the proposed method. So it's a, uh, this particular threshold is recommended by staff because it's, it's simpler, and it will actually go out to more, uh, more potential, um, public works providers. So along with all of that, the thresholds that we discussed, the state has eliminated the limited small works roster process, which is fine by us. We never used it. It was also too burdensome to use. It required, um, uh, if, basically, it said you don't have to go out to everybody. You can go to five vendors in your list, but the next time you go out, you can't go to the same five. You have to rotate it. And so managing that rotation process was just, um, uh, just not worth it. So we would always just send it out to the entire list. Um, in addition, they, the state legislature had made, uh, changes, uh, to the small works roster process as a whole. It includes the, a requirement that we have to encourage, um, uh, state-certified women, minority, veteran, and small business-owned businesses to register on the state's roster. We have to post our bids that we would send out with the State Office of Minority and Women's Business Enterprise website, and, um, there were changes to the bonding thresholds. And that's all in the, the document that was provided with your staff report. On the minimal competition, uh, process side of the public works procurement, um, we talked about the bid thresholds. Um, the piece that I would, um, like to emphasize is, uh, we're changing, the proposal is to change the requirement for seeking three or more bids to two or more bids. Um, and the reason is, we've, more often than not, we'll go out to five vendors and we'll get one bid, right? And we throw the word seek in there to communicate that if we, if we make every effort to get multiple bids and we only get one, we can still move forward with these thresholds. Um, and then we, uh, because it's not limited by state law, up to the different craft or trade, uh, whether it's multiple or single, um, this, we threw in there in the policy that the city manager, as the final authority, can waive the requirement to get multiple quotes over that $50,000 threshold, um, uh, provided he, he or she deems it appropriate.
Councilmember Best Camel.
Mr. Fritz, before we go on for that one, um, you said the city manager can waive bids over 50,000, but below that 75,000 threshold, so just between the 50 and 75. So he can't waive a $350,000 bid and say, okay.
That's correct. It, once it's, uh, once it goes beyond the $75,500 for a single craft, it's stipulated in state statute. It would only be for that $25,500 window.
And the seeks, the word that you're using there, that's not state, that's something that we're allowed to use through our discretion?
Yes.
Okay. And that's something that they're totally okay with, and?
Yes.
For, for a bid that, at that size, at least.
That's correct. For a bid of that size, they're totally okay with that language. All of this, by the way, has been reviewed by, um, myself, the, our procurement manager, um, Jeff Ganson, the city attorney. Um, so, I mean, it's, it's, all of the changes we're recommending are well-vetted out. That's correct. And we're not, um, suggesting that this would increase the city manager's purchasing authority without first having to ask for councils.
That was going to be my other question, is are we increasing from 30 inflationary pressures, whatever, but are we increasing it from 30 to 50 then?
I'm at 50.
Are you at 50 right now?
I'm at 50 right now.
Okay.
Yeah. But no, we're not proposing to increase that at this point. So for purchases of supplies, material, and equipment that, um, are not related to a public work project, our current thresholds have been very, very conservative in the past. And state statute, the new state statute allows us to go up to $40,000. Um, staff, in keeping with how conservative we've been in the past, we're suggesting $20,000. If council is fine, uh, giving staff the discretion to go, waive going to multiple bids up to $40,000, we would not object. But the current proposal is set zero to 20. No quotes are required. We can go to one vendor. Over that 20,000 to 50,000, which is the limit established by state statute, three quotes are needed, and then after 50,000, it has to be competitively bid. I put in your staff report, um, uh, an error. I was indicating in the staff report that telecommunications and data processing competitive negotiations was going to be changed in the, um, proposed, uh, update. Um, at the last minute, I had reversed that change and forgot to take it out of the staff report. So just note that the resolution and the policy that was provided with the staff report is correct. The report itself had an error in it. So no change for competitive negotiation. For service agreements, um, we're, this is not, uh, a change related to any change in statute. It's not mandated, but it's based off of our experience over the last four or five years. Um, we have in our policy right now, an initial contract can be entered in for two years, and then after that, we can do one or two-year increment increases up to a max of six years. Um, and we're proposing that we change the policy to say that we can enter into an agreement for up to six years. Um, and, uh, after that six years, if needed, we can do an extension for one to two years, but it requires written approval from the city manager. So it'd be a rare occasion that we'd do that. The idea and the best practice is that every five to six years, seven at, at the most, you typically want to go out and make sure that the vendor that's providing the service is within market. But there have been times where we've found that it's actually disadvantageous to the city, um, to do that and to have that, uh, those few times where we could go to the city manager, as a procurement team, we could go to the city manager and ask for dispensation just to continue for one to two years, um, we felt was a valuable tool.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
I guess, can you give me an example where that two-year has been, uh, not, not useful in order to pursue?
I think the perfect example is our on-call engineering contracts that we use, uh, for all of our not huge projects, right? of our not huge projects, right? When we do big enough projects, we'd go out and we'd get engineering design firms and construction management firms for those projects. But for like, the paving projects is a great example. We, we know we're going to be doing those, but sometimes those take multiple years. They're sidewalk projects and those, so they span, they're not projects that typically take a year. Some of them are staged boat launching, for example. That's going to take some years to go through that process. So having that two years and having to redo that every two years gets to be a problem real quick when they're doing projects. In this case, that could take three to four to five years.
And then the final type of procurement that we have changes for is architecture and engineering services. These are driven by, one change is driven by a mandate from the state legislature, and that's just to bring in some requirements around making sure that we review statement of qualifications from minority and women-owned firms and veteran-owned firms as they're available within our roster system, and that we actively encourage those types of firms to submit statement of qualifications to us. The other piece is not mandated, but it was highly recommended by our state auditor at the last audit. They were looking at our on-call contracts for engineering services and geotechnical services, and they said that, they recommended that we build into our policy an explicit authorization to do on-call contracting for architectural and engineering services and make sure that it contains elements to ensure that we're in compliance with the law. And that's what we added in, into the document. There was one overarching change that's applicable to multiple purchasing types, and that is, we're asking for authorization from the council to be able to do, use the GSA, United States General Services Administration as another option for cooperative purchasing. So for those that may not know, we don't have to go through all the bidding processes if we can piggyback off of somebody else's contract. And the opportunity to piggyback off of the GSA is one that we like and would like the authority to have. And I'm happy to answer any additional questions and the recommended motions on the screen.
Any questions for Mr. Fritz? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I move that the city council approve resolution number 646 as presented, adopting the revised purchasing policies.
Second.
Any discussion? Deputy Mayor?
I don't see anything that's on our here. And if this helps staff out, especially in terms of procurement, which sometimes needs to be speedy and should always be inexpensive and beneficial, then let's do that.
Okay. All right. Seeing no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Fritz. Business item number 10 from consent is C Click Fix. Councilmember Best Campbell.
I just wanted to bring this forward. This is the app that's been on our phone, and this is getting a lot of use, and I think it's a really important tool for people to have because it's one of the easiest ways to get in touch with us. You don't have to email us, you have an app, you send a picture, you don't even have to send us your name. I think it's been really informative to see the type of things that people really focus on. Generally, it's infrastructure, they are the first ones to tell us if there's a sidewalk buckled or a tree down. I think that staff has been doing a really good job answering these requests when they come in, providing answers. There's a lot of things that you can tell about a city through what's going in on the app, and I'm seeing less and less about infrastructure problems and more and more about, let's say, cars that have been sitting for too long, which is definitely not something that staff can do, but I know that it's forwarded on to our police department. It's a good clearinghouse for people to have, and I think the extension of this is fantastic. I can't believe that we approved this during COVID. I know Mr. O'Neil had just come on, you'd just moved from California. It's been rocky the time since then, but I think this app has been a really good tool in our arsenal, and I thank you for bringing it. I thank you for having it. I also thank you because there's a lot of different staff that responds when a different request comes in. So clearly, all of City Hall is involved in this process, and it's a really good way for us to see in real time what is mattering to people, what we can do better, and actually what we're doing really well when you see these things close. So this is fantastic, and I can make the motion, I move that the city council approve the purchase of the three-year software renewal of C Click Fix from Civic Plus in the amount of $77,406, and authorize the city manager to take any steps necessary to implement this decision.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next up, public comments. Anybody signed up? Nope. Reports to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Just one item this evening, and it's, it's as typical, one step forward, two steps back. The council obviously appointed a replacement, or the incumbent, for planning commission this evening. Unfortunately, I have to also report that Mrs. Turcot has submitted her resignation effective mid-July. So she'll be able to attend the June planning commission meeting, but there will be a vacancy following that. We are already out soliciting applications for that, and I believe going through mid, end of July, hoping and targeting an August 6th meeting, I believe is our first August meeting, for an interview and hopefully filling that position. So encourage people to apply. I know we're advertising, you go through our, our website to apply. Thank you.
Thank you. Reports to councilmembers. Councilmember Evans.
Thank you. The only thing I have to report is just to remind everybody that tomorrow is Juneteenth. It's a great time to take part in community events, virtual or in person, and it's a great time to bring a friend so they can learn about it.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yeah, as we saw, the staff will be very busy over the summer doing a lot of community engagement, so therefore specifically in July, there's going to be a lot of events. The community engagement subcommittee will be on hiatus through July, and will begin on the first meeting of August. So just want to give everyone a heads up, we'll begin meeting again in August.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
I started to say nothing, but I do have to point out, I had a great time at Community Invit. Unfortunately, it was in Kirkland. I would love for us to try and do our own type of events to recognize Juneteenth, and once again, recognize that Black history is American history and it should be observed. Councilmember Arnt and I also had the benefit of going to an in-person Eastside Transportation meeting and just lots of fun people, good to see people in person, and we'll continue carrying out as long as they do those, and I think they, they're doing a regular cadence at this point. That's all.
Councilmember Best Campbell.
Well, the first thing, it's the time of year when all high schoolers are graduating. So I know that Woodinville High School had its graduation earlier today, so congratulations to the parents, you did it. Congratulations to the high schoolers, you survived it. This is a sad, happy time of year, I guess. I'm so proud of all the kids in our community. They really are an outstanding bunch. If you see some of the programming that they do, they come and speak to us in meetings. Truly, they are the best of our community, so maybe we're doing something right, fingers crossed, it's something that we all should be very proud of. I also received, and I think all of council received, a question about wood trails. I know Ms. De Souza's of course not here tonight. The question was surrounding, how firm are the plans? There was a Public Spaces Commission decision in January to add a trail segment. The public was sort of confused about that, so is there a way that we can, since I know there's some construction going on, maybe send out an additional update to the community because they're, they're still a little fuzzy, because imagine, they don't watch all the meetings that we do.
Councilmember Arnt.
Thank you. One note from that in-person ETP meeting is we had a presentation on safety from Metro, and one thing that was very encouraging to come out of their push on safety is how well they are doing in terms of numbers of incidents per thousands of riders on the line. They are back kind of pre-pandemic levels, which is encouraging, and they are asking people to remind our neighbors that it's safe to ride Metro, it's convenient. And so my family took a little trip on the light rail this, this weekend. Kids found it was really fun, and I just enjoyed reminding all of their friends that kids get free Metro transit. So get them their ORCA card, they can ride buses, light rail, ferries. So this is something that we need to teach our, our children about, teach them how to use the system and get the ridership up, because that is how we get more transit in our city and in our surrounding area. I also had a wonderful meeting with the new manager for the Health Connections Solution location, which is opening up in Kirkland next month, and this is a 24-hour crisis care center, no wrong door facility, available to anyone with behavioral or mental health issues in our community. It is, will be available for Woodinville residents and Woodinville emergency services to direct individuals to. And I believe that they are going to be setting up some trainings and some coordination meetings with our chief and Eastside Fire and the Corps Connect people to make sure that everyone knows exactly how people can use and access that facility. But it is also available to any resident in the area who is needing help at any time, 24 hours a day.
Councilmember Taylor.
No comment tonight.
I got, just got a couple of things. I've been driving around lately a little bit, and it occurred to me, and it's probably obvious to some, but I, I think a lot of our community doesn't understand, the city of Woodinville, if you're, you're driving around Woodinville, our roads, our sidewalks, our bike lanes are dramatically superior when you, than when you leave the city limits or you leave the city roads. Because when I, when I exit Woodinville, I'm often on roads that are just potholes and divots and all over the place, there are just, so that's, that's my way of saying a big shout out to staff, particularly Asha, for doing a great job in our city. A lot of people don't know where the city roads and county roads and state roads, state routes begin and end, but I have a good sense of it, and you guys are doing a great job, and I appreciate that. Also, a shout out to community engagement, particularly to Alana and the community engagement subcommittee. A lot of great stuff, exciting stuff that I think our community is going to be very excited about, hearing about, and stuff that's coming. And a shout out for that, appreciate the work on that, too.
Motion, Mr. Edwards.
Second.